Okay, welcome to the Marshall County Board of Supervisors' regular session, May 7th, 9:00 a.m., here at the courthouse. Notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the podium and use a microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that, excuse me, others may be given an opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chair to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented, at which time the public may participate, and a roll call vote will follow. Item number two, roll call vote, please.
Please.
Here.
Hi.
Yes.
Goodman?
Here.
If you would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Please.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we get to do something fun now, a service award for Brianna Nelson with the county attorney's office. Jordan, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Sure. Jordan Gaffney, Marshall County Attorney. We get to celebrate Bree's five years with our office. If you do the math, that goes back to she started when the courts were shutting down at the very beginning of the COVID pandemic. On her very first day, we were like, welcome, we'll train you up, but we have nothing for you to do because there's no court. But we're very thankful that she stuck it out, she's still with us, she prosecutes drug cases, she's been involved in mentoring and training up a number of newer attorneys in our office, she's essential to who we are as an office, and I'm just so glad that you decided to choose us as your work on. Thank you, Bree.
Do you have anything you'd like to say? Nope. Thank you. Just a comment.
Thank you. We appreciate your service. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number six, the consent agenda, including the previous regular session minutes, April 23rd, 2025, claims as audited, personnel changes, approve a new hire, Ben Harris, Medina, Assistant County Attorney, full-time, at $84,500 annual salary, to start on or after May 15th, 2025. New hire for the sheriff's office, Jasmine Walton, full-time jailer, $23.42 an hour to start on or after May 7th, 2025. Item number 6D, bio-manner management plans, Tamco Park, 2 LLLC, 58267, at 3079 310th Street, Galmon, Iowa, 50106, signed with changes. Providence 36, number 68849, at 29575 335th Street, New Providence, Iowa, 50206, signed with changes. Bart Halverson, number 66700, at 32857, County Highway S-57, New Providence, Iowa, 50230, signed with changes. Prestige Farms of Iowa, number 65971, 1670 170th Street, Clemens, Iowa, 50051, signed with changes. Prestige Farms of Iowa, 65971, at 1444 148th Street, Clemens, Iowa, 50239, signed with changes. Prestige Farms of Iowa, number 65971, 1813 170th Street, Albion, Iowa, 5005, signed with Item number 6E, the Auditor Recorder's Quarterly Report, January through March 2025, total $68,084.38, and that is the end of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Goodman? Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, approved State of Iowa Alcohol Beverage Division License Renewal, West Marshall Golf Course Association, LC 0010945, doing business as Lincoln Valley Golf.
I move that we approve the State of Iowa Alcohol Beverage Division License Renewal, West Marshall Golf Course Association, doing business as Lincoln Valley Golf.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight, Trails Presentation. We have Jeff Schneider here to talk to us.
Sure, good morning, everybody. Jeff Schneider, 2312 Mulway Drive, Marshalltown City Council at Large, and also President of Trails, Inc. Today, I'm mainly here on behalf of Trails, Inc. What I'm asking for, I was about here a year ago, asking for the supervisor's support on our A-Tip grant, which would have gotten Iowa River Zedge Trail from where it is today, including to the trailhead that's under construction, all the way into Harton County to complete the full trail. We unfortunately did not win that application. It appears really nobody technically won, the funds have been frozen, is my last knowledge. But we continue to have opportunities for getting this trail built with different grants. All the grants really like to see community support, city support where applicable, county support. So what I'm here today to ask for is for the supervisors to publicly declare some amount of money that you would support the trail with to get to Albion. That is our next achievable phase. We have an opportunity in front of us for Destination Iowa. It's a little in question if we'll be able to make the pre-application deadline with the amount of funds we need to raise for the entire scope of the project, which we think the most effective scope would be from where the trailhead is today, north of the tracks to meet the Iowa River Zedge Trail and go to Albion. We're still trying to do that, but there's just some pieces that need to fall into place. But if we had a million-dollar commitment standing from the county to get this project done in some way or another, even outside the scope of this Destination Iowa, maybe next year if we win a TASSA grant, which is $2 million we've applied for, we were hoping to actually maybe know one way or another about that one now, but there was some things that went on with the state. And so there's another round of funding that the city is going to be applying for toward this project in the next few weeks, but maybe later this summer, if we know that we've won that, there will be some other grant opportunities available to finish this. And it's just a lot easier to get these grant applications done if we have a standing commitment from the county. The city has contributed quite a bit of money in the past to getting to the city limits. We just really love to see the county support. There's a lot of reasons we need to build this trail, economic development reasons, we need to stop the brain drain from Marshall County, we need people to make their homes here, raise their families here, we really think the trail can play a big part of that. So whatever commitment you guys would like to make would be fine. If you want to do it over multiple years, that'd be great. We're not even asking for cash payments until, you know, construction phases are done. And of course, we'd give you updates about what would be going on there.
Jeff, from the city limits of Marshalltown up to Albion, do you have a cost for that?
Yes, so just for that portion is about $5.7 to $5.8 million.
Okay.
So we do have, excuse me, we do have fairly very recent estimates, one because of the A-Tip, but then also, again, this year, we've had Snyder and Associates come back in and do a more detailed analysis of that segment, and we feel really good about that price. The other thing that I know in my city life is we're seeing construction bids coming way under budget. We just recently had the piecemeal pavement repair here in Marshalltown come in 33% under engineers' estimates. And so we're hoping that we can get a good bid when this happens. With the county support of a million dollars, there may even be some opportunities that we can do this without external grant funding, with just cash that Trails has raised and some pledges and some other funding sources that we're applying for, state rec-trails grants, fed rec-trails grants, TASSA, we might be able to do this piecemeal to get to Albion at this point, especially with these low construction costs.
How many bridges do you go, we go the Iowa River Bridge?
Yeah, so with two through nine, so we have eight bridges yet to go. We should start on the next four, they should go out to bid in June, and so by next year, the next four bridges should be done, but we still have the biggest bridges of the project ahead of us. Luckily, the bridge crossing the Iowa River is in really good shape. It's just kind of cosmetic damage around the piers, and then some environmental work on the north shore of the Iowa River maybe, but the costs are not deal breakers, which we had feared a couple of years ago. But with the engineer's analysis, it's probably about an $800,000 project on that bridge alone.
Timeline.
Yeah.
Timeline for this current grant you're applying for is?
If we can, if all the stars align, it would be in about two weeks is when the Destination Iowa is due. There's a lot of stars to align, I'm maybe 30% confident we'll be able to turn in a pre-application for that. There's some work going on with the Quiet Zones Project here with Union Pacific Railroad and an amount they would contribute for safe crossing across the tracks, which could play into this. Not confident that's going to happen, and if we have to find that amount of money outside of there, we can't do it this time. Could potentially apply next year for Destination Iowa as well, but there are other opportunities like the state rec-trail, or yeah, state rec-trails grants, fed rec-trails grants, and those are chunks of, you know, $300,000 to, you know, $600,000, $700,000. We'll just have to wait and apply for those, build these projects out.
How's this fit in with the other Destination Iowa funds that Marshalltown has received?
Sure, so when Debbie Durham was here earlier this year, you were there, and she really wants to see this done. It doesn't really have any impact to the ongoing project, but she and everybody else in that program would love to see those dollars amplified by another project that is connected to it.
So it's not a problem?
No, we're completely, 100%.
They aren't trying to spread it out geographically away, you know, other places?
It all depends on where the projects are and what the quality of the projects are, but yeah, there's no detriment to us because we have an existing project. In fact, I think that was appealing because it's been going well.
It's helpful.
Now, you mentioned earlier that you see the trail, the bike trail as being important to stop or lessen the brain drain. Have you guys done surveys on what top five amenities are necessary to keep that from happening?
Well, I don't know, John, if you have anything to say from the chamber's perspective, I know you guys researched that. Anecdotally, it is a thing that young families look for when they move to areas, it's like, what is your trail system like? I don't have any hard numbers at hand of saying that what priority is that in the list of things, like affordable housing, school, I mean, all of those are really important too, but this is definitely a deciding factor on where people raise their families.
Yeah. Good morning, Board. John Hall, Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce, 34 West Main Street. I wouldn't say that we have, you know, hard and fast surveys about amenities that are being pursued. What we can reference are a series of different studies that have been done around the economic impact of trails. Most recently, statewide trails or bike organization, Biking Coalition, commissioned a statewide biking economic impact analysis. We were able to help be a sponsor of that, I think it was a $500 sponsorship, and with that, we were able to actually get some specific data for Marshall County pulled out of that report. And so we've got a highlighted feature around the impact of the trail systems already on Marshall County itself, and, you know, to commission a study individually would have been probably in the $10,000 to $15,000 range, so we're happy that we've got that. But time and time again, we see the reflection of the economic impact. What I'll say is, I don't know that it's as much about what folks say they're looking for when it comes to amenities as it is what we can market to people as they're considering their opportunities, that they want to see more amenities, they want to see a variety of amenities, and we know that trails and biking is one that appeals to a broad audience because of the versatility of different ways that people can access and use trails, whether you're a runner and, you know, don't need the entire stretch up to Albion, we've already got some great trails to be able to appeal, whether you're a hobbyist biker who wants to be able to bike to a spot and bike back and maybe stop for a beverage along the way, you know, that's what we're working to appeal towards more. And then from a tourism perspective as well, we know that folks travel for these kinds of trail destinations where they can connect to multiple communities and make a day or an afternoon of it, again, with those stops along the way. I'll also echo a little bit on the Destination Iowa front, too. So we were fortunate to have Director Durham here in town and actually up in Albion to look at the Raymond Veterans Park as a component of this. What I'll say is, trail systems are not things that typically would fall into the Destination Iowa funding category. They would typically pivot that towards the Community Attractions and Tourism Grant, which would limit us to somewhere around $250,000, maybe $500,000 for a really extensive project in there. Seeing the connection and connectivity from the trailhead and Lynn Creek District with our existing Destination Iowa projects to an incredible amenity like the Raymond Veterans Park, through these eight bridges that are going to create an incredible environment are the reason that she said that this would be absolutely within the Destination Iowa framework and that we'd be able to leverage those resources. And I'll say, time is of the essence when it comes to these. I know that they're pretty heavily leveraged for Destination Iowa this year, so even if we are able to get the pre-app in, it might be a highly competitive year, but Director Durham has always kind of laid out her timeframe as matching up with the governor's timeframe for serving in office, and so we're looking at the end of next calendar year as probably that potential wind-down time. And so making sure that whether we're positioned this year or whether we're positioning for next year, that we need to go after that. And the final thing I'll mention, and this started three years ago when Director Durham first came up on an annual basis, she's routinely referenced the value in seeing the county at the table, whether it was our first Economic Outlook Breakfast, she noted that both the city and the county were in the room. She has noted time and time again, because that doesn't happen in every community, and frankly, that hasn't always happened here, but she fully understands and appreciates that, and I think the story we can tell with the city's investment in the trailhead and a county investment into the trail itself extending all the way up to Albion is an incredible story that she wants to see echoed across the state, so.
Well, and she has made the connection for us for the RISE application over by west of State Center for the Highway 30 work done over there, so.
Yeah.
That.
Director Durham's been a, yeah, a great champion of our county and of not only recovery efforts, but then new opportunities that we are getting to pursue, so.
If you apply for Destination Iowa, what would be the amount you're applying for?
The full five, well, most likely 5.7 million is what it'd be, so we'd get 25% of that, so a little under a million and a half.
Okay.
Another timeline question is, you said you wouldn't be expecting a commitment of payment now.
Correct.
Over how much time would?
I think we can be flexible. If you guys can pass a resolution saying that you'll commit over five years, even if our timeline is shorter than that, I'm sure we can figure out a way to finance, you know, that commitment upfront if necessary. Maybe you guys could work out something, finance yourself. We can be very flexible on the timeline.
You said two weeks till application is?
Pre-application.
Pre-application.
Yeah, a little less than two weeks, so.
Oh, that's less than two weeks, so. Was wondering if we had another board meeting in here?
No, unfortunately, no.
Yes. It's a significant ask.
I know it is. I appreciate you listening.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else, any other comments? Is there any here?
On the ask, was a million, was there, what's, I don't want to say a minimum, what's another targeted amount less than that that would still be helpful in your application, or is the million what you need?
The million is what we need. So the previous ask was $2 million, and this is roughly half the project that we have remaining in Marshall County.
Yeah, it doesn't leverage quite as much, though.
Yes, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Emily, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Emily Herring, Marshall County Conservation Director. I go along with John and we, in the importance of developing our rural areas for recreation and bringing people in, there's, we, the county conservation system actually did recent studies talking about how much income that county conservation brings in, and that includes a lot of the trails, because a lot of the trails in rural areas are actually managed by county conservation, and it's for, it's figured that for every $1 that the county puts into the budget of conservation, $10 come back in economic development, which is a pretty impressive number. And so I know it's a big chunk of change, and I know you guys have a lot of budgeting you have to consider and think about. I do think it's a great way to help Albion and help our rural communities, so, yeah, I'm glad I'm not you.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
So would they need a resolution prior to their?
Application.
Pre-application, we could do a special next one.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll mention, and I apologize, so in order to do the pre-application, there's a minimum amount that has to be committed or raised.
Okay.
For the state. I think it's 70% for the pre-app.
65%.
65% for the pre-app, and then it's 80% for the actual full application?
Yes, 80% and then 95% at award time.
At award time, and so basically, the state wants to see progress being made in closing that financial gap. In order to make the application for the pre-app this year, and that's what Jeff and I were sidebar-ing briefly on, it's about $1.3, $1.4 million in commitments needed in order to make the pre-application in two weeks. And so I know that's maybe a more extensive ask, but something that can be worked against with grant funding or the like would allow us to swing at it even this year and start to put things together. I know they're pending on a number of different grants, so there's more dollars that may be forthcoming that would diminish that, but yeah, there's some timing components to that, the more often we can swing at these grants or these resources, the better chance we stand at achieving them, so.
Do you need the resolution or just a motion, any?
I think we'd be fine with a motion as long as we get a follow-up resolution, yeah.
Yeah, but you're asking for a set amount right now, you know?
Yes.
That, I mean, that's really what you need for this immediate need if it's, you know, two weeks to pre-app.
And if we need to, we can do a special if you guys are available next Wednesday to, you know, for them to think on it and look at budget and.
I'd be perfectly fine with that.
Yeah, it's a lot to consider to figure out how all the moving pieces work. I would be interested in seeing the, like, your financial plan for the, what you're applying for.
Okay.
You know, so where would all your funding come from?
Yeah.
You know, if the supervisors were in this for the county, what are the other, what are the other sources and what, how's that all fit together?
Okay. Get you the documents.
Yeah, I'm comfortable doing a special next week on this item. I just would like to take a look at our budget we just passed, see if there's some type of adjustments in our appropriations that would make this see fit. And we got some moving parts and some budget stuff right now as well that, I just want to make sure that we got it. I'm very supportive of this project, I really want it to be done, we just got to make sure we have a fiscally sound way that we're going about this, and we want to make sure we do that. So we're going to cross our Ts and dot our Is on this, touch base next Wednesday, I think if that works for schedule.
Yeah, and I mean, I do think this would be a tremendous thing for the county, for Albion in particular, I think there'd be a lot of opportunity for Albion to grow with this, so.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Item number nine, discussion and possible action for county property uses for Rev Up Downtown.
Brittany Tao, owner of Britt Marie's &amp; Co., 1 West Main Street. I'm actually here on behalf of the Marshalltown Central Business District Promotions Chair, co-chair. So Rev Up Downtown, we did it last year, it's a collaboration that we do with the, with the raceway here in town, we had cars parked downtown, and people just came in, walked up downtown, we tried to get them in the stores, just a way to, you know, bring people downtown. So this year, we wanted to expand on it a little bit, and we're looking at doing just a one block because it was expanded through the whole, you know, third to third, but we're just wanting to do right out here in front of the courthouse. So we're going to have a whole bunch of race cars, looking at maybe getting some sponsors and maybe some dealerships and maybe bringing in their cars, something like that as well. But what I'm here for is, we would like to have the band show put up here on the corner here, working on trying to get a band, the event is May 29th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Sorry, I should have mentioned that first. So we would like to have a band, a couple food trucks, and then, like I said, we're going to have all the cars here on this main block. We figured that's the easiest one to block off since there's a lot of businesses there on that street that would be easier to close down, so, other than that.
Okay.
Certificate of insurance. So we have application and certificate of insurance?
Okay, everything's all set, yeah.
Can I talk to Lucas?
I was going to say, where's Lucas?
I talked to, he's busy today.
He's studying.
So he said that it's typical and he's in my room.
Yeah, okay.
Awesome.
Yeah, so.
Where did you say that they would park the cars at?
They'll be on the road.
Right out here.
Yep, from Center, yeah, Main Street Center to First, so.
Yeah, which doesn't have through traffic right now.
Exactly, that's why I was, we were actually going to do it on my block, but then they said this one might be easier just because it's less foot traffic with the restaurants on the other one, and this eventually will be the, you know, entertainment block, so might as well start getting used to it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other questions for Brittany?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Yes, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the county property usage for Rev Up Downtown.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Brittany. Roll call vote, please. Yes?
Hi.
Yes.
Goodman? Yes.
Okay. Well done, Brittany. Okay, item number 10, public forum. Time set aside for the public to make comments on topic of county business other than those listed on the agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum.
Good morning, Board. John Hall, Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce, 34 West Main Street, here to introduce Alex Fernal to you. She joined our team on Monday as the Marshall County Economic Development Director, and her background primarily being in sales over the last handful of years, I think you'll find that her personality and disposition will lend itself well to making connections quickly throughout the county and finding opportunities to help promote and grow our rural communities throughout the county. So let Alex introduce herself.
Hey, everyone, I'm Alex Fernal. My husband and I live in Marshalltown, outside of Marshalltown by Wolf Lake, and we've got three little ones. I went to school at West Marshall, and my kids will be going to East Marshall, which is a hard pill for me to swallow, but it'll be good. So I'm excited to work with all the communities and people that I've grown up with and learning more about the East Marshall School District as well, and working with all of Marshalltown.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
We look forward to working together. Any other items for public forum? All right, moving on to adjournment. The next regular session will be May 21st, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. at the courthouse, first floor meeting room right here, all business to be acted upon. That session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the Board of Supervisors' office by Wednesday, May 14th, at 2025 by noon. There being no further business to come before the Board, the meeting is adjourned at 9:30. All right, moving on to adjournment. The next regular session will be May 21st, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. at the courthouse, first floor meeting room right here. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the Board of Supervisors office by Wednesday, May 14th, at 2025 by noon. There being no further business to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned at 9:30.